We'll start with people in the audience and then
Okay.
get to the people that are sitting in a comfort of their own home.
Right. Okay, so first we have Jackie Ng. Ms. Ng has authorization to speak on behalf of the Housing Affordability Coalition?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I need to get my class.
And just as a general caution, we have a lot of people here and people signed up, so please be as succinct as possible. I don't want to cut you off, but, you know.
But you will.
Well, I will, but let's, you know, use everybody's time economically if we can. Thank you.
Do my best.
Name and address, please?
Jackie Ng, Cooksville, Maryland. Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair. I represent the Coalition for Housing Affordability. We submitted written testimony yesterday with a petition signed by 138 county residents supporting the testimony and tonight just going to highlight the coalition's position and points that we ask for your consideration. Hoco by Design clearly states that after periods of substantial growth and prior decades, the county is at a critical inflection point. In the area of housing, the report acknowledges, as staff has recognized, noted tonight, that the current undersupply of housing and projects a continued robust job creation, 59,000 new jobs over the next 20 years, will only fuel further housing demands and projected perhaps 31,000 units. Further, the report states that to sustain the economic growth that's been historically enjoyed and to maintain a competitive edge over the other markets and in other markets, the county must continue to invest in housing, infrastructure, job creation, and other activities that make it a desirable place for people and employers. These statements underscore the imperative that Hoco by Design should strongly support increasing the county's housing supply through the development of new, redeveloped, and preserved housing units affordable to all incomes. Yet, while we sincerely appreciate having been heard DPC's responses to the expressed concern about needing increased housing targets, the report response regarding the needed investment in housing still falls disappointingly short by recommending the annual target of only 1,580 units, which is about 500 fewer units than the currently approved annual target of 1,900 units. In recommending the lower number of new housing allocations, the report uses the following rationale. Since the county has only realized an annual average of 1,500 to 1,600 units per year over the past decade, the revised target of 1,580 is a realistic measure, given the remaining land available in the county and multiple factors affecting influencing growth. The coalition believes that this rationale misses the point of a plan, which should, which should be to set goals that will respond to known community needs, in this case, to respond to the county undersupply of 20,000 units, including 7,500 affordable housing units. The plan should be outlining ways to achieve the community needs goal, not setting a lower goal because it hasn't been met in the past few, in the past years. To do the opposite, to actually set a target lower than Plan Howard 2030 guarantees perpetuating what the plan forthrightly states is a housing crisis. If the lower allocation is adopted, and if it were to then become possible to create more affordable housing units, the allocation cap would prohibit creating those units. Our perspective is that it's more responsible to establish the community needs goal and then to achieve the goal using the multiple excellent tools offered by the plan, such as missing middle, accessory dwelling units, et cetera. To ensure that the next general plan achieves its overarching goals, including a healthy jobs and housing balance, and provides concrete direction to the comprehensive zoning, APFO, and other decisions and processes necessary to implement the plan, the coalition offers the following recommendations. One, change the proposed APFO allocation chart by increasing the total new housing units to 2,000, consistent with Plan Howard allocations, of which 500 would be affordable housing units. Explicitly integrate into Hoco by Design all housing opportunities, master plan growth, affordability, accessibility, preservation, and redevelopment targets and their supporting recommendations. Three, modify the proposed land use map to facilitate housing equity and deconcentration of low-income household neighborhoods. Our full testimony proposes four specific ways that we suggest modifying the land, the flume. Develop, four, develop further the illustrative concept plans in technical appendancy-focused areas, particularly those that offer affordable housing opportunities, including Newtown, which we just heard that there has been some movement towards doing that, which we appreciate. Establish commercial housing, school capacity, and transportation targets as the foundational goals of the to-be-developed Gateway Regional Activity Center Master Plan, which we believe should be undertaken at an accelerated pace. We appreciate the commitment of the administration, particularly the leadership and the staff of DPC over the past now three years that's led to the development of Hoco by Design. We also appreciate your consideration as planning board members of the coalition's comments, and we intend these to help ensure that the county's current housing crisis is abated, not exacerbated. Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Casey. Yes, I can hear paper shuffling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey, if you could state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Paul Casey, and I live at 4037 Dato Court in Ellicott City.
Okay.
And tonight I appear as an individual, although I'm a member of the Housing Commission, also serve on the steering committee of the Housing Affordability Coalition, and want to thank Amy, Mary, Kate, and everyone for the extraordinary job, and when you think about a three-year effort, and the extraordinary work product, it's exceptional. Thank you. But that leads me to my comment. It's such an exceptional report, there really isn't that much to criticize from a housing perspective. And so I focus on one thing, and that is what I consider to be the disappointing housing target, even as amended. And I'm sure that's not a surprise. I served on the Economic Opportunity and Prosperity Task Force that a few years ago recommended that there be an affordability needs program that would address the broad spectrum of vulnerable populations in our current county and establish goals for addressing those needs. And then the housing, the county executive requested that we create a Housing Opportunities Master Plan Task Force in response to that. We did. I served on that task force as well. That was an 18-month task force with 23 people from all across the county and different stakeholders, also served by nine county departments, including the Department of Planning and Zoning. And after all of that effort, that recommendation was an annual target of 2,000 housing units to address both the job growth need and the pent-up need, which has been beautifully explained by the Department of Planning and Zoning. Thank you. My feeling is, why not have that aspirational target? Because if we don't meet the target, there's no harm. Now we have a target of 1,900 units and we don't meet it. There's no harm, but there's nothing wrong with being aspirational and trying to meet it because the need is so great. This plan proposes, I hadn't intended to do this, but I'll do this briefly, such incredible innovative incentives, mixed-use commercial and residential development, promoting diverse housing at all income levels with missing middle and accessory dwelling units, reusing parking lots and repurposing existing buildings, increasing density, making use of county land through co-development of public facilities and residential housing, raising height restrictions, providing more realistic parking ratios, offering bonus incentives, so many incredible tools. And then to say, you can't use them all. If the tools allow you to develop 2,000 units in a year, you can't do it. You have to stick to 1,500. If the tools can allow you to do more units up to 2,000, why not? Because the end result would be a county which would be better equipped to deal with this housing crisis. We're creating a chasm between the need and the tools. We shouldn't have that. Let's bridge that chasm and allow the tools to help us achieve the need and satisfy the crisis and achieve a place where we can have people of all walks of life, all incomes, all ages, live in Howard County and. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent Lovelace. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brent Lovelace. I'm a representative from the PTA Council of Howard County Legislative Branch. The PTA Council of Howard County represents local PTA units of each Howard County school. General Plan Update is a critical vehicle that will influence the systemic school overcrowding, educational standards, and budget obligations. The PTA Council has a longstanding motto, "Every child, one voice." The General Plan Consultants chose every voice, one vision. PTA Council's singular vision is provided by the positions approved by its delegation of local residents that will live and remain in Howard County and will be directly impacted by this plan. PTA positions include, but are not limited to, controls to ensure no school operates above 100% capacity, mitigation fees set to actual costs to mitigate the educational impact of development, insured growth controls prevent concentrations of poverty. This planning board meeting is insufficient to review the hundreds of planned recommendations that directly affect education. At the highest level, the implementation plans include multiple concepts that create significant increases in educational demands without guaranteed means to support the change. The addition of a 14-page section relating to school facilities consists of an inconsistent sampling of data intended to distract from Howard County's decades-long history of resource shortcomings for education. The tools provided in the plan include non-binding suggestions to intertwine capacity funding, reduce educational standards, combine schools with other county obligations, coupled with legally binding zoning changes that increase density and overcrowding exemptions. The absence and admission of language relating to blueprint requirements, concurrent infrastructure, deferred maintenance, and portable classrooms is notable. The relationship of education to the increased density is also discussed separately in a chapter regarding the adequate public facilities ordinances. The content intermixes the changes to development policy along with the detailed implementation action items, which will include recommendations to remove most of the primary mechanisms for APFO to be effective. These include wait times, unit allocations, and mitigation funding, each of which of these run counter to the core expectations for PTA membership. The addendum noting changes based on public input less closely resembles the sentiment of tens of thousands of Howard County education beneficiaries and more closely resembles the specific concepts championed by various land use organizations, reporting that all development increases enabled by the general plan are capable of providing adequate school resources without lowering standards despite the unquestionable outcome that that decades-old policy has resolved to today. As with any plan of this magnitude, there are specific items which support a better educational experience that PTA members would gladly support. There are also many items that bring educational setbacks. Overall, the general plan focuses on density, increasing initiatives, infrastructure exemptions, reductions in legal protections, and vague infrastructure solutions reliant on chance opportunistic partnerships. The plan, as proposed, leaves PTA members with a significant future challenge to support education in the decades to come. Without the planning board's direct intervention, we need you to enable an adequate, sustainable educational service that is contingent on growth going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tracy Broccolini.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Broccolino, and I live in.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's a vegetable, I guess. I live in Mount Airy, Maryland. I am the president of the Community Action Council of Howard County, and I thank you for this opportunity to share our experiences with housing in Howard County. As a personal note, I'm an Oakland Mills alum, and my family moved from Pittsburgh in the early 1970s into all the estates, and we watched Columbia and Howard County grow up from this new city on a hill to the place that it is today. As the county's local community action agency, CAC, works tirelessly to diminish poverty and enable self-sufficiency for all Howard County individuals, families, and children in need. With our four core services, including housing assistance, we walk beside families to grow and thrive in this community. In FY '22, we spent $5 million in public funds and private donations to keep close to 800 households from being evicted. And fiscal year-to-date, we have spent $2.4 million to keep families in their homes. Although we no longer have the COVID emergency funds, the need for housing assistance persists. As a side note, as of December 2022, there were 460 people in Howard County that were homeless, and 47 of them were households that had children in them. Our clients at CAC make challenging housing choices every day to avoid homelessness. They sign leases or have been placed in homes that they know they can't afford so that they don't have to live in their cars. They know that they're going to be facing eviction because they can't afford to live here, but they have no place else to go. These hard-working clients are committed to achieving self-sufficiency, yet again, they can't afford to live here. Of the over 4,200 households we served last fiscal year, 60% of them have some level of college education. In January, we had a single mother with a preschooler come to CAC for housing assistance. Her previously, the previous employer significantly reduced her hours, leaving her with a part-time job now, and she's unable to cover her rent. At that time, her total monthly income with child support was $2,300. Yet, the newly released 2023 self-sufficiency standards for Howard County state that a family that looks like this, a single mom with a preschooler, needs to gross $8,000 a month to survive here. With CAC's support, she has now secured a full-time job, making $40,000 a year with benefits and pursuing a law degree. Her rent is approaching $1,600 a month, and she is sustainable once we are able to make her current with MIHU funds, which will cost us over $4,000. The plan doesn't account for families that are living above the poverty level but below the self-sufficiency standard. And the friend of mine last week, when I explained this challenge to her, said literally to me, "Those people shouldn't live here." That's shocking. But when we consider the plan and the low poverty of affordable housing, the options speak loud and clear. CAC supports the Housing Affordability Coalition's request to increase the number of overall housing units and increasing the number of affordable housing units in the plan. If we are to remain that city on a hill, we must, with active and intentional planning, work to mitigate the socioeconomic inequalities. And this adjustment really meets those goals of this county. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Chris Aliva. State your name and address, please?
Chris Aliva, Columbia, Maryland. Good evening. I'm departing for my prepared remarks for a moment.
You're good.
All right. I just want to thank you for making the adjustments to the future land use map for the industrial areas of Group 1 and Columbia. I know many industrial property owners over there will appreciate that. As a longtime proponent of recycling, I submitted a copy of the March 23, 2022 letter I sent to the planning board regarding general plan applicability. As I pointed out in that letter, the currently applicable policies covering NTE are the 1960 General Plan, the 1965 Supplement, the 2009 and 2016 Amendments for Downtown. The plan before the board tonight ignores the 1960, 1965 plans that set forth the policies that undergird Columbia. The plan needs to be amended to reconcile the existing policies with the new policies. There are many unanswered questions about the operation, legality, and standing under the covenants that raise substantial doubts about the viability of the general plan. Columbia has a renowned tradition as a diverse, inclusive, and equitable place. It's why many of us moved here. Columbia was DAI before everyone ever heard of DEI. Columbia is also a planned community built out under a common scheme of development covered by the preliminary development plan that fixes the total number of dwelling units in the Newtown. For this reason, there is no density exchange that can be legally applied to Columbia. In accordance with this common scheme of development memorialized and recorded in the Mosaic of Covenants at a hard ceiling of 2.5 acres, the only way to increase that ceiling is either by amending the covenants by a two-thirds vote of the defined members or a condemnation of the covenants by the Howard County with just compensation to all property owners. I have several further comments that I've made, and they're in the prepared remarks. Also, I made some, what I believe, corrections to this document here where they did put the 2.5 units per acre. So the 2.5 units is applicable to zoning and the covenants. It is not, they're not independent, and the covenants rule and overrule the zoning. So I thank you for your time tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is this the same as what you emailed us?
No, no, no. I, no, I emailed you the letter from 2022 with all the attachments of the general plan.
So this is.
This is, this is a supplement. Yeah, and I.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I've read, read all that that you'd sent.
Oh, my God.
And I wasn't going to reread.
Really? It was exciting. Oh, okay. Well, okay. Well, okay. Thank you, Tim. Take care.
Tim Rogers. Tim, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just state your name and address, please.
We're done with.
Tim. My name's Tim Rogers. I live in Westminster, but I'm representing the Howard County Public School System. Good evening, Chair Coleman, Director Gowan, planning board members, Tim Rogers, manager of school planning with Howard County Public School System. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony regarding the General Plan Update, Howard County by Hoco by Design. Since the early stages of the process, the offices of school planning and school construction were asked to provide input through a strategic advisory group and chapter review. We work closely with DPC's staff on needed data and language for schools-related sections of the plan. The information contained in Chapter 8 of the plan accurately describes the school planning activities underway and some of our recent and planned future capacity projects. Additionally, as the development paradigm for Howard County shifts to a more intentional planned development mode with the focus on providing needed housing within focused and intentionally planned activity centers, it will be crucial for adequate school capacity to be included in the planning of these centers. If capacity needs are identified based on student enrollment projections, measures to mitigate the impact of the new development should be required in the development plans. We look forward to and support all efforts toward continued collaboration on measures to ensure adequate planning for school facilities as this plan moves toward adoption and the focus shifts to implementing the plan's recommendations through the APFO review and the rezoning processes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have Peter Engel. Peter, can you hear me?
Can. Can you hear me?
I can. If you just state your name and address, please?
I'm Peter Engel. I'm the Executive Director of the Howard County Housing Commission, and our office is located at 9770 Patuxent Woods Drive in Columbia. I am a resident of Washington, DC. So first, I'd like to thank the planning board for the hearing and particularly thank the planning department for everything they've done on this. I know it's been a monumental task, and I also know that what you're hearing tonight is probably just a small taste of the various viewpoints they've received, all of which pull in different directions, and they're required to somehow figure out how to match those up into a single plan. A very difficult task. Nonetheless, I'm here to take one of those sides, and that really is affordable housing. The Howard County Housing Commission, our mission is to create more housing and to help people up the housing ladder and the economic ladder who are at the lower end of the income spectrum in the county. And the first point I want to touch on is the areas that are allowed in the county for multifamily housing and for dense townhouse housing. So this is where our lower-income people live. This is where our starter homes would be. And the plan doesn't increase those areas by any significant amount. And if you were to map, which I have done, the areas that are allowed for multifamily against the areas that are open under APFO, you would see that the only real places where we have room for additional units are the places we already have the lower-income housing. So Harper's Choice, I'm sorry, Town Center, Oakland Mills, Longreach, all of these areas that were originally designed with apartments under the original concept of Columbia, which was moved away from in the later villages. What that effect of that currently is that we are concentrating poverty and we are concentrating race. And without changing that in a significant way, that concentration will only continue. It's true in Howard County, as it is in most of the country, that we are more segregated today than we were at any time since Brown versus Board of Education. These, that segregation has been brought about by the one remaining government-dated discriminatory option zoning. By zoning large lots and other things excluding the lower-income population, we are segregating the lower-income population, and that is by, you know, de facto because particularly the black population is poorer than the white population, segregating the black population. Also, I would second the point that while we are looking at schools, we do not look at the fact that there are at least 7,500 households today, most with children, who are paying way more than they can afford for rent, and those children are suffering. And that's because we do not provide adequate housing in different areas for those families and others. I think the way to get out of this is to create more multifamily zones throughout the county. I hear the arguments about Western County, but we could simply just double the capacity and put two houses on half-acre lots and two houses on one-acre lots and two houses on three-acre lots, et cetera, without causing any, any change to the needs for public water and sewer, and I'm sure you could do a whole lot more than that. Instead, what we're doing is using the public water and sewer as an excuse not to change the zoning. These two items are not linked inextricably. We could change the zoning now and figure out how to do public water and sewer where we need to later. But again, as was stated in the aspirational sense of the plan, not trying to create solutions in these ways, we are instead looking for problems that aren't really there. A second piece of that clearly is the number of units that are going to be allowed. Over a 10-year period, we don't even cover the units that we're missing today, much less the growth. And it's unrealistic to think of this as a 15-year plan. So I think we are stating the problem and intentionally not addressing it. Finally, I would just point out that we consider schools and roads to be public facilities that people need. I'm not sure why we don't consider housing to be the same. We are clearly not meeting the needs of the Howard, of Howard County residents for housing today. This plan should be, of all things, starting with the presumption that that's something we need to do and we should be setting out to do. And as it's structured now, we're not, we're not going to be close. If anything, we're creating, we're allowing the problem to intentionally get worse than it is now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure seeing that clock countdown in front of me is the best way to testify, but I guess it kept me to five minutes, so. A pretty.
Thank you. Next, please.
Lisa Markovitz.
Hello. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, great. Thanks. Hi. Good evening. Lisa Markovitz for the People's Voice, Ellicott City, Maryland.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. I did email the testimony, but I'm going to summarize to help make it shorter. So, good evening. Thank you to all who've worked real long and hard on this. I know you'll be hearing a lot about general land use planning issues in this matter, so we thought to take a different route and suggest specific edits, as implementation will be key, of course. The plan has very high priority goal of increases in residential development, especially with assumptions that those efforts will provide more affordable housing units. So it becomes very important to include language in the implementation suggestions in the plan to make sure that goal actually will provide the needed units to get the benefits suggested. In the past, when advocates have requested more specific. In the past, when advocates have requested more specific language in the general plan to get away from really subjective terms-making policy, we have been told the plan must remain general to move with changing times defining how to serve goals. This go-around, the plan included many very specific suggestions, several requesting enormous changes to AFO and exact examples of development benefits to offer. It, it needs a balance in specific suggestions to meet more protections for diverse needs and competing resources. Instead of having affordable housing pitted against good infrastructure balances, the plan could seek to address both. So we have some suggested edits. In Chapter 1 regarding missing middle housing, the implementation goals, uh, in Chapter 1 include offering benefits, waivers, and fast passes to get more of this type of housing. Suggesting massive benefits for providing, quote, "significant," unquote, "units" should be more specifically defined, at least saying a majority or some hike increase over current required levels, especially since fees can be paid in lieu of providing this type of housing which concentrates it. In Chapter 5, language should be added to safeguard buffering requirements next to existing neighborhoods for the extreme goal of high-density activity centers, many of which are located next to old neighborhoods and shopping centers right next to R20. Suggested edit where it notes "implementation goals" to, quote, "allow sufficient density in the activity centers," unquote, may be add along with improved buffering and retained environmental protections. Some buffering language should occur in Chapter 6 as well. These edits will help make high-density not just trump all other land use responsibilities. Uh, another specific suggestion in Chapter 6, um, has exemptions to be given to AFO school waste without minimums noted of what is required to get them, or any quantifying of an appropriate amount of affordable provision. Suggesting that specific exemptions from AFO will aid in reaching affordable unit goals without any suggested requirement as to the amounts of the provision by a project is a recipe for not meeting this goal at all, and it being taken advantage of, when we could instead use this time to be far more responsible in securing real, genuine progress. Adding advice, uh, advice about minimums to provide to get the benefits is needed. Regarding school capacity, uh, chapter, the county continues to misinterpret the Howard County Public School System feasibility study regarding sourcing of new students from development versus resales. In Chapter 10, data is presented as to how low a percentage of new students come from new homes. It is clearly and honestly noted that, quote, "new," unquote, "homes" are being defined as new occupancy permits in the last year. See page 22. How can we purport to be planning long-term land use goals for the county and keep pretending that new housing should continue to be defined as producing a new occupancy permit in the last year, when creating school enrollment data labels are sourced by new housing? Our home's not new development anymore after one year, that's absurd. To help get more accurate planning, we must add to page 22, implementations in the school chapter, add item 6. Quote, "Collect data sets on sourcing of student enrollment to define new development beyond one-year-old units," unquote. This is more important than you might imagine. When we finally got increased impact fees per unit, the proposed increases derived through fiscal analyses deemed relevant to the calculation were reduced by this exact percentage in that year's feasibility study due to the notion that resales made up the rest of the student enrollment. Not a good myth to keep using in planning. I'm going to end on a compliment. In Chapter 10, excellent inclusion of a specific goal regarding affordable housing here, where it says to strive for a, quote, "one-on-one replacement of affordable units in redevelopment," unquote. Let's see more specific work in the areas mentioned above like this also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Karen Emery.
Hello, I'm going to be very brief tonight, and I'm going to build on what some other people have previously stated. Um, I live in Columbia, Maryland, and I want to talk about, uh, the chapter about schools. I know that in the earlier presentation, um, the speaker noted that the recommendation is for the county to partner with Howard County Public Schools. I actually think it needs to go farther than that, and I want to use some examples. Howard High School has 15 portable classrooms behind it. The enrollment at that school is well over capacity. Thunder Hill Elementary, which was doubled in size a few years ago, has three portable classrooms. Stevens Forest Elementary School has five portable, portable classrooms, and it has never been expanded. And there's no mention in the plan at all, and this is where I think that Howard County has to go farther than just partnering, there's no mention of how we're going to get back to brick-and-mortar schools for all of our students, or perhaps it's not stated in the plan, is it to rely permanently on portable classrooms, as they do cost around $80,000 to move, so they're not really portable. I can't find any mention for how the county will fund the deferred maintenance on our schools, and I can't find any mention for how the county will support our low-income students who require free and reduced meals. I can't find any mention for how the county plans to add more teachers to these schools, and I think this is critical. If we're talking about, I mean, the focus of the plan seems to be on where we can develop, how we can develop, how we can add more housing, we have existing situations that need to be addressed in this plan. Um, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next I have Mr. Haggu. Can you hear me?
Yeah, uh, can you hear me?
I can now, yes, thank you. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Okay, uh, very good. Uh, Hury Haggu testifying for, uh, Howard County Citizens Association, uh, um, address is in Fulton, Maryland. Uh, good evening, members of Planning Board, uh, I'm testifying, uh, for HCCA, uh, to express, uh, uh, great concerns about the county's fiscal impact report on, uh, Hoco by Design. Uh, the county, uh, has a six-page fiscal impact analysis, uh, which, which uses the FY 2023 adopted operating budget, operating and capital budget as the basis, and concludes that, um, residential, uh, development, uh, new growth would generate more revenues than costs for services and infrastructure. Uh, that's a quote from the analysis. Uh, first of all, um, I just, I wanted to commend the people who prepared the analysis, uh, because, uh, you know, the steps taken were, uh, pretty clear and transparent, and they were able to, uh, they were, they would, they enable a third party to reproduce their results, um, uh, which is what I did. Uh, I, you know, produced the entire analysis, uh, which has allowed me to identify certain issues with the results. Um, first of all, I think, you know, we need to, uh, you know, finally at least, you know, debunk this myth that residential development pays for itself. It does not. Um, the, the, since, uh, 20, since 2016, uh, the county has, on average, issued, uh, $67 million in general obligation bonds, and, uh, the analysis clearly indicates that this practice will continue or in the future, uh, for, for the entire duration of the, the projection. In FY 2022 alone, according to the, the latest, uh, county's, um, comprehensive annual, uh, audit, uh, um, uh, that the county issued around 160 million in, in new debt, uh, and it has around, uh, 1.8 billion dollars in outstanding, uh, debt. Um, so the, the idea that any new money, uh, that comes in, um, is, you know, uh, somehow, any new plan that comes in is somehow generating new, um, you know, uh, net revenue needs to be, uh, supported by, you know, uh, some, something different that the county is doing, uh, from the past, and, you know, nothing in this plan indicates that, uh, there's anything different. The plan assumes that half the cost to fund schools i- is debt-financed, and 100% of the, the cost to build roads is debt-financed. Um, so, and, and the justification is that, um, money from new residential development is being, is used to pay expenses from previous residential development. So it's, um, it's, it's not being used to pay, uh, you know, uh, devi- uh, impact due to the, the new residential development. Um, uh, in, in addition, um, that the county does not take into account, uh, the, uh, it, it, it underestimates the cost to build schools, the, the per-student basis cost to build schools by, uh, 50%. Uh, if you look at, you know, the cost to, for the Guilford Park High School, uh, and Hammond High School, uh, you know, when you take into, you know, th- those costs and the per-student, uh, basis, it's, you know, it's significantly more than what the county assumes. Um, another thing the county assumes is, uh, $33 million in capital improvement, uh, plans over the next few, over the next 18 years, but it's not clear whether, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not taking into account the, the, the new accumulation of capital, uh, of deferred maintenance for the school system. So there's no indication that is, you know, it's reducing that, uh, the, the accumulated deferred maintenance. Um, you know, another fundamental narrative that we need to debunk is that somehow the supply-side economics will, will have some impact on reducing home prices. You know, we need to be reducing home prices by 50 to 100,000 dollars per home, you know, not, you know, the two or 3,000 dollars at the margins that, you know, that, you know, this supply of housing would, would, would have. So this, there needs to be some fundamental regulatory mechanism that needs to address housing affordability, but also we need to define what housing affordability is. The county has not defined what housing affordability is, uh, and so, uh, that needs to be done. And, uh, another thing is, the, the county assumes that, uh, this 59, this new 59,000 jobs, all, all of them will contribute to the, the 30,000 homes that in, that would, that would be in demand, and it's, uh, and, uh, you know, clearly, that's, that's not the case, because some of those people will not be living in, in Howard County, they, you know, they'll be living in other counties, so, um, that needs to be addressed as well. Um, y- y- uh, yes, uh, just, you know, please take into consideration these, these issues as you recommend, sort of, as you make recommendations to the, to the county council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Diane Butler.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. If you could state your name and address, please.
Diane Butler, 4056 St. John's Lane, Ellicott City, Maryland, 21042.
Okay.
Um, I've been following the news, the, the new plans for Howard County carefully, and I've made lots of different comments in all the different positions that we were able to do so, but they don't seem to be listening to too many of them. Um, I have some comments about additional dwelling units, or ADUs, that this plan wants to allow by right, quote, "in the some parts of the county." I'm not quite sure what that means, but there had better not be any ADUs allowed in the two watersheds in Ellicott City that due to overbuilding on land that was in the past left open for stormwater management has caused immense increases in flooding and even loss of lives. I will fight you tooth and nail on this. The infill that was put on these lots has caused even more stormwater management problems, which the county has not addressed. Adding another house in single-family zoning on these lots that already have a house on them will exacerbate this problem beyond recognition. I also sat on the AFO committee for an entire year, and we do not have the infrastructure needed for such a short-sighted change to our zoning laws. We do not have the school seats. We do not have the roads. We do not have the stormwater management, and we do not have the emergency services needed to double our population in these chosen areas that we now want to put two houses on instead of the one. Frankly, in my single-family zone, if my single-family zoning in, is no longer in single-family, I will bring a lawsuit against this county. I bought in a single-family neighborhood for a reason, and you do not get to take this away from me. This zoning change does nothing to address the problems for housing, the, the ADUs especially, does nothing to address the problems for housing that you're professing that these changes will solve. Let's be real here. This has actually become a life-and-death decision in this county, in these watersheds, that it better not happen in these watersheds or anywhere in the county by right. There's a reason. There's, there are distinct reasons that earlier zoning didn't allow people to put two houses on every single lot. You want to put an addition on to your current house and let your in-laws live in with you, fine, but better planning has to be done. This is not a wish list, this is a plan. I sat on when I lived in California on my Tracy 2000 planning, and we planned for these types of things. But you could talk about all these great ideas to increase density, but the infrastructure is not here, and it's not addressed in this plan, especially for school planning. But destroying already-built environments is not progress. And FYI, my husband and I don't even bring in 8,000 dollars a month, so I don't know where you're coming from, but this is the poverty level for some of these people. I really need you to relook at this, some of these issues. Thank you very much for your time and energy.
Thank you.
Um, I have Joel Horowitz. Mr. Horowitz, can you hear me? Joel, can you hear me?
Good.
Uh, you, I, there you go.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. If you could state your name and address, please.
Uh, Joel Horowitz, Harper's Choice in Columbia. Uh, first point, since this is a big historic document, I'd like to see the major photos that identify things captioned, so that people can look at them in the future and understand where they're looking at, and there are ones from outside of the county that don't say what part of the country they're from. Regarding Wild Lake, it is not going to be, the Village Center is not one to be transformed, and it needs to be carved out from the other Village Centers in that respect. Mr. Leva mentioned the Columbia Covenants, and reading the 1965, uh, approval by the Commissioners, the covenants were central to their approval. Um, part of it was the maintenance was going to be perpetual, uh, covenants were, with an annual charge, rec- basically describing the Columbia Association, with sufficient funds to provide for the perpetual operation and maintenance of the open space. So that's part of the whole plan. We heard that schools are not usually included. That seems to be a quirk in the state law that for Chover County, general plan updates, but for municipalities, it does include public schools with sufficient to accommodate the school population consistent with the standards of the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction. I continue to be disappointed that three largest properties get no mention in the plan, they being the University of Maryland Farm, it's 900-plus acres. Several decades ago, there was a temporary, uh, move to preserve it. The Mannheim Auto Auction, which is potential for more intense industrial use than an empty open-air parking lot that stretches for more than a mile. And the Quarry in Jessup, next to the new high school, which with the concept plan extending the road from Gateway, essentially makes it a extension of Gateway. Now, while the, you heard mention that you can't deal with the multiple ownership out in the West, nobody seems to care about the multiple ownership in Gateway for ever redeveloping that, and that's why Longreach Development didn't happen because of too many owners. Mo- the motion chapter talks about fostering modern mobility choices, but mentions nothing about electric vehicle takeoff/landing taxis. I was told by the transportation staff, because it's outside of the 20-year period. I don't really think so, they were recently testing them in New York. Mentioned the 65 miles of pathways, but omits, again, the reliance on the 95 miles of pathways of the Columbia Association, but the report does mention the Columbia open space, the benefits to the community. The last big issue seems to be, they'll mention extending bus service in Route 99 from Mount Hebron, the Marriott's Ridge, with the new park across the street. The people who came to the park meeting wanted either a cricket or an ice rink. They're going to need to go there somehow, all these young people. And to extend the bus then from Turf Valley, you can get the site fill and to the fairgrounds when there's an event, and that would have avoided much of the traffic issues with the Asian Food Festival last year.
Thank you. Do you have a concluding thought?
Those, basically, things that should be included.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if I can, Jean Sedlaco.
Here we go.
Hi.
Hi, Amy, if you could state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Brooks and I live in Oakland Mills, ninety-five twenty-five Kilimanjaro Road.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name again is Amy Brooks. I teach at Oakland Mills High School. Tonight I'd like to share a few stories about the impact of our current housing situation on my students and colleagues. My student Mandy recently missed an entire week of school because she had to help her parents make money by landscaping in the morning and house cleaning in the afternoon so they could, quote, "pay their rent and not go to court." She later sent me a message that said they had made the payment, so she only, quote, "needs to help them after school now," which is a relief because she really, really, really wants to graduate. One of my colleagues at Oakland Mills races to Baltimore County after school to visit her elderly mother. Donna recently moved her mother there from Nebraska. She is the only family that her mother has, but they couldn't find any affordable senior housing near their home in Columbia. This new living situation has dramatically altered the amount of time Donna can spend at our school beyond her regular workday. It has added to her stress and increased her time on local roads and inter-county highways. Jill, another teacher in my building, like so many teachers in HCP assets, cannot afford to buy a home in the county where she works. In my building alone, I know numerous teachers who commute more than thirty-five miles each way from Carroll County or other neighboring areas. This means they rarely attend community or school events in the afternoons or evenings. Jill, for example, grew up in Howard County and coached high school lacrosse for twelve years. She also coached children through Hoco Parks and Rec for almost two decades. She had to quit all of those commitments when their family of four needed more space than their condo provided. No matter how hard Sheena's husband looked, they couldn't find any homes they could afford in the area where she grew up and where all of her extended family still lives. Jill cried the first time she made the long commute from Westminster to our school, Oakland Mills. My student Mandy, my colleagues Donna and Jill, they want to be successful in Howard County, they want to participate in the opportunities of Howard County and they're contributing members to both our schools and our economy. Things would be very different in their daily lives if the cost of rent and mortgages in our area was reasonable. They all spend hours each day compensating for the expensive real estate market. These precious hours could be used to participate in extracurricular activities that benefit everyone. They could be used to connect with peers in the wider community. Mandy, Donna and Jill are hardly alone because our elected officials have made it so challenging to build more housing options in Howard County. Thousands and thousands of children and adults are struggling. These are real people who deserve better. It's time for our government to make bold strides to address the housing crisis in our area and now we need your leadership to help them do that for the good of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a call-in user. I'm not sure who that is, but you're unmuted now if you want to speak.
This is Dana Sore, can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Good, I'm glad you were able to get in.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the confusion earlier. I'm Dana Sore, phone book growing in Columbia.
Okay.
All right, I am the Deputy Director of Bridges to Housing Stability, which has served Howard County for thirty-three years with affordable housing and homelessness-related services. Last year, we served nearly one thousand residents and tonight, I believe my words represent their viewpoint and the viewpoint of Bridges, as well as many others in our community face the challenges that our clients face. We commend, first of all, DPZ for their work on this plan, particularly recommendations around preservation of affordable housing, the zoning overlay for new affordable housing and missing middle housing, but we're dismayed that the plan recommends a further slowdown in the production of new homes. If that recommendation is implemented, our housing crisis will get worse. The crisis is rooted in a shortage of twenty thousand homes, which is documented in the plan and that resulted from housing policies that have slowed housing construction while healthy job growth, needed job growth for our community has continued. We're attracting more workers, but we're not building enough homes for them, which isn't sustainable because we're creating scarcity that forces people to compete for a shrinking supply of homes to buy and rent. And like any other financial competition, the people who are already advantaged, people with higher, with assets, high incomes, they win. People who earn less lose. So our policies have created a housing market that favors people who are privileged and punishes people who are not. I'm going to give some examples of our crisis from the viewpoint of our neighbors who earn low to moderate income. And so that nobody has a misperception of who I mean, I'm talking about the one in four county households earning below seventy-five thousand dollars. School system employees, including school teachers, members of our government workforce, much of the nonprofit workforce that provides essential human services, many employees at the hospital, assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement centers, daycare providers, essential workers in numerous other industries, seniors on fixed incomes, people with disabilities. Many of these members of our community can't afford to buy a home or rent affordably in the community that they serve and we can trace much of their pain back to our county's existing housing policies that have created that housing shortage. The scarcity of, of homes has driven the median home price to five hundred and eighty-one thousand. Great for some, very bad for people earning lower income, below area median. Those homes are not affordable to people earning below area median. People like our clients are blocked out of homeownership that could create wealth for them over the long term. Renters make up one quarter, quarter of county households and they're in crisis too because the competition for scarce rental homes has caused rents to skyrocket. Over twelve thousand renter households now pay rent at unaffordable levels and I would note to the previous testifier that affordability in rent is clearly documented by HUD, it's been documented for twenty or thirty years, it means more than, you're, you're paying around thirty percent or less of your income. I'm, I'm representing Bridges, so could I have five minutes, please? For seven thousand renter households, rent consumes over fifty percent of gross income, fifty cents of every dollar of income. That number, the number of households in that category has increased by thirty-three percent since two thousand and ten. So that problem's getting worse because housing is getting scarcer. Again, that's a direct result of the county policies that we have in place now. We also have to recommend, recognize that those policies are impacting people of color disproportionately. That's clear in the demographic data about families requesting housing-related assistance, as well as the data about residents who actually lose their homes. Of the hundreds of schoolchildren who experience homelessness in a typical year, by a wide majority, they're children of color in households that have been financially squeezed out of their housing. Racial inequities are also evident in the population and zoning maps shown in the Hoco by Design Plan itself. We see the highest concentrations of non-white residents in areas that are zoned for higher density housing, such as multifamily, because denser housing is usually more affordable and non-white residents who generally earn lower incomes are pulled economically to those limited areas that allow dense of housing. Conversely, we find higher concentrations of white residents in areas with larger lot size requirements and where zoning regulations prevent multifamily and other types of denser housing. They're more able to afford the higher prices in those areas. I'll be really plain, the population maps show a strong connection between our zoning regulations and racial segregation. Others can argue whether that was the intent, but the effect is the same on our community. We've, we've committed as a community to equity and diversity, so let's recognize and address the racialized impact of current policies that create housing scarcity, drive up prices and economically segregate and physically segregate our community. So by recommending that we slow housing development even further, Hoco by Design would worsen the shortage of houses, cause prices and rents to escalate further and people with higher incomes might be inconvenienced, but people earning less will suffer real financial distress. We need higher allocations for new homes with at least five hundred affordable. We've provided written testimony as well. We think we can solve this problem, we can have schools and deal with the infrastructure, but we have to sit down and recognize that housing is infrastructure too. It's essential to the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Jean back online. Jean Sedlaco.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can now. If you could please state your name and address.
Yes, Jean Sedlaco and I live in, on Northfield Road in Elickett City.
Okay.
I'm testifying regarding the housing elements of the plan. I work for Enterprise Community Partners, the national housing nonprofit founded by Jim Rouse. I also serve on the Housing, Howard County Housing Affordability Coalition and notably I served on the Hoco by Design Housing and Neighborhood Strategic Advisory Group. There are three theme, themes for addressing affordable housing, quantity, location and urgency. Regarding quantity, as we've heard, the numbers in the AFO chart of the plan are simply too low to meet need. In the interest of time, I defer to others who have testified before me. Specific to, specific to affordable housing, we are thousands of units short for our current neighbors who are paying more than thirty percent of their gross income for housing, which we just heard is the standard. Or they are overcrowded, doubled up, living in hotels, couch surfing, et cetera, including many students, as we also heard. I request that you recommend that the number of general and affordable housing units be increased to levels recommended by others. Regarding location, we need to have all available tools to use land at its highest and best use. Others have testified about that as well, including from the Coalition. I request that you recommend that their suggestions be implemented into the plan. Regarding urgency, the plan lays out policies, implementation steps and a general timeline, but the plan is limited on clear priorities, targets and milestones. It uses terms like midterm and long-term. If we are going to embark on the journey, this journey, then the plan should have prioritized guidance now on how to get there. That guidance should not be so soft or vague that we are mired in how to advance it and then we end up perpetuating the problem. Please recommend that the plan set out clear timelines given the urgency of the housing crisis in the vein, vein of, these four steps are of the highest priority and the target is to get them done within three years. There is low-hanging fruit that could be picked now and doesn't need to over-ripen on the vine. Finally, regarding the Strategic Advisory Group's recommendations, the group's main focus was missing middle housing and the plan included that. We addressed other ideas such as Gateway and expanding the PSAs and other options and we, I ask that you recommend that those timelines also are more detailed. In sum, we have a terrific opportunity now to prioritize and be as specific as possible. As Jim Rouse is often quoted as saying, "I have lived and worked with the conviction that what ought to be can be with the will to make it so." Let's take this opportunity to be clear on what ought to be, how it can be achieved timely and have the will to make it so. Your role in making recommendations to get us there is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
That is up for, for, for the signups.
Correct.
There's a couple people that came in late and like, sir, you've been here all night. Did you, did you want to take an opportunity to talk or?
Yep, there's a couple of my folks.
Please, please wait, you need to come up, state your, state your name and address and.
Yeah, right there. It's fine.
It's fine. My name is Jimmy Estugano, I live in Elkridge. Thank you for letting me speak without any notice. As a landowner, commercial landowner and as owner of multiple businesses, I heard a lot of people talking about housing projects and multihouses and, and all that stuff, but none of those people, I don't know even, what's the last time they were in Elkridge on Route One? If you drive the corridor Route One, you'll notice there is no grocery store. There is one grocery store, Green Valley, right on Route One. Nobody wants to come to Elkridge, nobody wants to open a business over there. The new complex that was built across the street from the Maryland State Police, it's all nice and fancy, townhouses, condos, all the bottom floor, it's empty from businesses. There is only two businesses. Typically, it's a nail salon and a tattoo shop in Elkridge. You guys cannot tell me we need more housing when we can't even get decent grocery stores. My property is commercial property, it's right on south hand of the road. We have, I, I own three businesses over there. Eighty percent of my employees, Howard County resident, registered voters, that if and when it happened with Howard, with Elkridge High School, they're all going to have to find new jobs, even if it's out of the county or even they have to move out of the county. It is nice, I have no objection for, for people with housing to find decent housing and decent homes for people, but the committee and the county needs to accommodate with businesses so they can grow and can employ people that lives in the county and pay taxes in the county.
Thank you.
I tell you, just, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Anybody else that didn't have a chance to sign up, don't want to speak, going once, going twice? Okay, thank you, everybody. There was a lot of good input tonight. Can I have a motion to go into work session?